Good evening, I'd like to open the Deerfield Planning Board meeting on August 20th, 7:03 here in the Town Hall offices. The agenda for tonight is, one of the previous minutes for previous meetings, review of the mail, any public comment, and then we're going to open a public hearing. And the hearing is on a site plan review submitted by SWCA. I don't know what that means. On behalf of Hexagon Energy LLC for development of a solar facility along Setright Road on properties owned by Chester Astrouski. Then we'll look at any other business not reasonably anticipated for you, that was prior to the closing of this meeting. I'll say it's the next meeting. I'll tell you if there's anything else to add or take away. This is a second meeting in a stop and the minutes aren't ready yet for the meeting we had two weeks ago, so we'll review with them in the next meeting. We should look at some mail we have received. So we have several letters about the latest in the public hearing about the proposed Dollar General storm. We're not going to talk about that tonight, so I'll go make sure it places down. Thanks for your most important comments. All right, so now we, just before we open to the public hearing, does anybody, any public comments about things that are not on the agenda tonight? It can just take two or three minutes so that you don't have to wait for the next meeting. We can do that now. Does anybody have anything important that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearing. Do you want to go over the lockdown? Oh, no. I know, I'm looking for the actual one. I'm making sure that all the public notices are done. So I'd like to read the legal notice that was in the paper twice and was sent out to butters of this project. Town of Deerfield, Mass., planning board, notice of public hearing. The Deerfield Planning Board will hold the public hearing on August 20th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Deerfield Municipal Office, 8 Conway Street pursuant to sections 5400 and 2200 of Deerfield zoning bylaws to review plans, including site plan, stormwater, and special permit submitted by SWCA Environmental Consultants. On behalf of Hexagon Energy LLC for development of a property along Setright Road, assessors map 242 lots 20 and 22, for a 2.0 megawatt AC or 2.62 megawatt DC solar array on properties currently owned and farmed by Chester Astrouski. Copies of the site plan and applications are available for review at Town offices during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated posted by the Deerfield Planning Board on August 6th and August 13th in our local newspaper and reporter, as well as sent out to the butters. And I have return receipts of the registered mail. So it's like that, it's posted for all. So let me just read the site plan and new application. Name of applicant is Old Frontier Solar 3 LLC. Mailing address for them is Charlottesville, Virginia. Property owner, as we said, Chester Astrouski, 194 Conway Road, South Deerfield. And the description is, on behalf of Old Frontier Solar, SWCA Environmental Consultants has prepared the site plan review and special permit application for 2 megawatts AC solar energy facility to be installed on lots 20 and 22 of Setright Road. As the project will be 2.0 megawatts AC and constructed on 9.95 acres of land, the project is classified as a large-scale ground-mounted solar energy system. And accordingly, we have, in our bylaws, we have a special bylaws for that type of project. So what we normally do is get the, we've got lots of plans and things to read here, but if the applicant and proponents could give us an overview, introduce yourself, give us an overview of the project, then we can see what the public has to say and we can move forward on this. So I guess I understand, a site plan review is what we're here, and special permit, and for solar, the planning board is the site plan review, the special permit in the party, so we can do that at the same time. And is there a stormwater button also there? Yes. So we'll do that at the same time. All right. So, do you want to introduce yourselves?
Sure.
Before I say that, we have a call from the Planning Board back on, John, Rachel are here at 5:07, so we have a call.
Great. Good evening, everybody. My name is Scott Reamer. I am here with my coworker, Daniel Bulka, and Kevin McCaffrey from SWCA Environmental Consultants. Daniel and I are with Hexagon Energy. We're a nationally active renewable energy developer based out of Charlottesville, Virginia. We've done nearly 1,000 megawatts of different varied energy projects across the country with over 20 years plus experience. But, that said, we're a small team that really prides ourselves in being able to work with communities and townships to help develop clean, resilient communities as we're moving forward. And so, we're really excited. Massachusetts has, it's a national leader in renewable energy specifically, and they have a new program called the SMART Program being launched here imminently. Nobody knows the exact date, it's a little bit mysterious, but we're all working as best we can with that date. And that is how this project would be developed underneath that. We would sell the power directly to Eversource, right here. The project is 2 megawatts AC, that's enough, it will produce on a yearly basis enough to power approximately 300 homes. We are working with Mr. Astrouski on some property that's set back just west of Highway 91, trying to make sure that it's out of the way. And, you know, it will have a lifespan of approximately 20 to 30 years, somewhere in there. During that time, no concrete will be poured. At the end of the project's lifespan, everything will be pulled out and the land will go back to agricultural production. So we don't see this as a permanent development by any means. This is something that temporarily provides power in this area, and in the future, we'll see exactly what happens here. Like I said, really excited to be here and talking about this. Thank you for hearing us. I'm going to hand the project over to Kevin to give you guys a little bit more of a detailed overview of what it is.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, so I just want to talk for a few minutes about, you know, the actual project. That's fine, I can stand up and go over.
I can hold it.
I can actually mostly put the people in the audience who are wanting to see, so when can we stand?
I don't know. Where's the camera?
Well, you can figure it out on either of these.
Probably the rear.
Yeah.
Well, it should be on the pitch wall for public lands.
Yeah, because we have, we have one. All right. All right. Guys, come on. All right. Yeah, I took the camera out there and opened it up. But then unfortunately, we also need to just speak into the microphone at the same time.
I can do both.
Sorry.
So Scott mentioned the project's off Setright Road. It's currently agricultural use, row crops. It's relatively flat. We did do wetland delineations early on, and there were some off to the east and southeast. We cited the project to be well outside the buffers of those, and have been in front of conservation and have the RDA signed off on, so that's all negative determination. Excuse me. So access to the project would be through the existing Setright Road. As you come up around the corner, it does sort of tail off into a dirt road, so it'd be a small section there where we did improve that with some gravel. One thing I want to kind of get out for discussion this evening is, the project is proposed on two discrete parcels, both owned by Astrouski. So one question we have is on the property line setback, and if that's going to apply here, if it is going to apply, then maybe we need to take a different route and do a subdivision. So I guess it's something for discussion this evening. As John mentioned, the total size is just under the 10-acre threshold. For this zoning, we can't exceed that. It's, and the extra-large scale is not allowed in this zone. So that's basically where we've capped it. In contrast to the project that went in at the quarry, which was what I would call a fixed ground mount, these are a little bit newer technology, it's a tracking system. So they're still on pilings, but they do rotate through the day slightly to track the sun. And at this time, there's no battery storage proposed.
So it's on grid, it's on a pinch over.
Yes, sir, correct.
So just as I mentioned, to improve this short section here, gravel on the existing right-of-way, and then the access into the site will be on an existing farm road alignment. So there's a, you know, a road base there, it's pretty competent, so we'll improve that with some more gravel. And then, really all we have is the driveway, there's one equipment pad for the transformer equipment, then the array, and then there'll be a chain link fence around the entire perimeter. Normally, we set that about six inches off the ground to let small animals get through there if they need to. I do have updated plans with me tonight, we did make one change since the submittal. Initially, the interconnection wire is running out along this common property line, and then from there, it's going to need to be buried, because existing utilities on Setright are buried. They made an agreement with the adjacent property owner to run overhead down here and out, and then interconnect at that corner, so that saves the trenching all along the Setright right-of-way. And just, it just made it a, you know, a more cost-effective, simpler approach. So I have two sets of plans, if you need more, just let me know, I can get more to And so you can see the wetlands on this over on the east, and the buffer, that's a 100-foot buffer, so we're well outside that. There will be erosion control set around the entire perimeter of the work area with a double barrier along those sides that have the wetlands, just to make sure.
Wetlands, I'm sorry.
Yeah, right here, that's the linear line, and then that's the 100-foot buffer. There's also a little pocket down here that you don't really see, well off the property. Really won't be much grading for this project. It's basically going to be at existing grade, harvest the vegetation in there, and then put down a quick seed to get things stabilized, get the project in, and then put in the permanent seed as things are wrapping up. I don't want to get committed to it, but construction's probably, you know, a few months, three to five months, something like that at most.
Can you just say, you said with the inverters and things aren't going to come out?
Sure, so, there's going to be string inverters. So the actual inverters will be mounted on the, on the array racks, you know, periodically. And those all feed into this equipment pad, which will have the transformer, and then that'll get it to AC and out into the wire. Just to talk about stormwater for a minute, since this is a row crop, and we're going to convert it to a, what I would call meadow condition, that's what we spec on all these jobs, is a pollinator mix that really has a deep root system, only mow it maybe once or twice a year, and we spec it so it gets about to the bottom edge of the panels, so it gets pretty thick in there. But the point being, from my standpoint for drainage, is that's basically my stormwater management system. So we're going to take a row crop that's sort of half-open with soil, and convert that into a deep-rooted meadow, and flow rates are predicted to decrease when you make those assumptions, even with adding a new gravel road. So I'd say that's the overview. Happy to get into details as needed.
I have one other intro explanation, and that is around the name of the project, why it's called Old Frontier 3. When we name and cite projects, we try to find something that is relevant to the township, and back in the 17th century, Deerfield was one of the primary frontier areas of the settlement of the area. And we thought it was kind of cool to be able to just work in this area with, serving as the frontier land there, but harkening back to your history here in the township. So, just in case you wonder why it's called Old Frontier 3.
Not after the high school?
Yeah.
Also the high school.
But it really liked my high school. So it's all around the school. As far as those two parcels you just speak of, they were contiguous anyway, for time.
Yes, sir.
I'm putting a step back between the lot. I'm sorry, because it's all one parcel, like, I mean, they're different parcels, but they're contiguous, so a lot line should go around, you know, otherwise.
I guess.
The buffer would be here.
The question is, why don't you make them one parcel?
You can, if need be.
I mean, we get people coming for A and Rs all the time, well, you just take away a lot line.
Yeah, that would be.
My problem with that is that if eventually you sell one parcel, then you've got a problem.
But on the other hand, I've seen places that have, they have parcel A, parcel B, and they're, you know, on the same owner, you know what I mean?
But then to have this one project go between.
And the other thing to throw in there is that this will be subject to a lease boundary, you know, so the project, the area will be defined with, you know, a new boundary that's under a lease for the term of the project. So I would assume that could have stipulations on sale of the underlying property.
So the lease will follow the property.
Yeah, see, we're the Planning Board, so we don't get involved in leases as much as we do in zoning, and that's, so. I just want to double check, it certainly doesn't make sense to have setbacks if it's all on kind of property, but I want to make sure they're looking down the road.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can, we can deal with it either way, I think you just need to know which direction we need to take it. An A and R is a simple enough process.
You know, A and R, getting rid of the property line seems to be the cleanest.
Yes, if you could do that. And that would be Chad Astrouski to do that, right?
Yeah. All right, I mean, that's 150 bucks to do that. And then, I don't think there'd be any, you know, then, and it's done, and it's just, it's done.
100 foot, 100 foot setback.
That's what it is on all.
Yeah.
All right, any questions? Comments from Planning Board members, or should I open it up first?
Yeah, it seems pretty straightforward to me.
So this is a time when, you know, butters, any residents, anybody has any questions, concerns, comments? Love to hear from you, and if, again, we want to ask people to sign in.
I just have one question too. The remainder of the product, project is that will be, sorry, the rest of the property, what is the, I mean, this sits kind of in the side, in the middle? What is the plan there?
It'll remain in agricultural production, it'll keep being farmed.
Okay.
Anything outside the fence.
Outside the fence?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do we need to get John to bring a microphone out for the public to talk?
We can, we can start overhearing.
Yeah, why don't we make this one, yeah, that'd be great, make that one available to the public.
Yes, sir. Anyone?
As I was showing you, you want just questions for the.
Well, just so, I could have said this at the beginning, so public hearings are, we hear from the applicant, and then the public can address the Planning Board, actually. And normally, it's sort of up to our discretion, we can have a conversation with the applicants, but sometimes you need to keep it more under control, that's all. But we do need, because both, because it's on TV and it's being recorded, that you need to come up to the microphone.
Do we have to have a signing sheet for today?
Yeah, we have a signing sheet here. You just tell us, just tell us your name, and then you can.
All right, so my name's David Decision, I'm a butter at 33 Setright Road in South Deerfield. A couple of questions, I'm sorry.
Decision.
Decision, okay. So a couple of questions I have, first of all, they talked about in their application a vegetative buffer zone that would face Setright Road, and, but it was, it lacked any specificity about what type of vegetation buffer zone, and how that's going to impact the sightline to the people that not only currently live on Setright Road, but the land across the street that abuts this property is also buildable lots that have perked. So they're in agricultural restriction right now, but they can be taken out and turned into commercial lots. That type of project, with that sightline, would have an impact on the value of those lots, which would then impact all of my neighbors that currently reside on that road as well. So I want to know what type of vegetative buffer zone that you are contemplating, number one, and number two, how that buffer zone is going to be adequate, given the topography of the land, because of the slope that goes down the hill. That land that's across the street that abuts to the west is flat and then probably dips down between 15 and 20 feet minimum before. So to me, if these site, these panels are going to be 10 to 12 feet off the ground, and then sitting with a view of property that's 10 to 25 feet higher, I'd like to know what type of vegetative buffer zone that's going to adequately cover up those panels so I don't have to look at these things.
So you want to know about the.
I want to know, I want to know what the vegetative buffer zone is, and how it's going to accomplish what they said in their application, that it's going to provide a barrier. I don't care if I see the fence, I don't want to see the panels. And that's going to require a fairly significant buffer. I'm thinking it's something between 15 and 30 feet to cover up those panels and to cover up that fence.
Because of the, I don't hear, because of the slopes down.
Yeah, so I guess, two questions here, so how far back are these from Setright Road, and then what will be in between?
They're almost 1,000 feet in. I guess I want the panels, but I also want to know what the, one of them has slopes out.
Just for, just to help us kind of think about this a little, how big is the whole property, how many acres is the whole property, do you know?
40.
Two parcels combined are just under 50.
And this is a nine and point?
Nine and a half.
Almost 10 acre of solar.
We use 10 across the road.
Yeah.
And I would say they are 300 to 1,000 feet off the road.
And then what's between the road and the panels?
Agricultural field.
So do you know what's going to be there, or?
I can tell you what's been there, traditionally. Occasionally silage corn, but most recently, it's been cabbage, it's been sweet corn, it's been crops that are, that don't generate any height at all. So we're not looking at, for two or three months out of the season, having a large agricultural crop that's going to be growing, that's going to cover the view, and even if it did, it wouldn't do so for any substantial length of time.
Yeah.
And it's a clear view, I mean, he wants to say that it's 800 to 1,000 feet, that may be so. This is a view, it's a scenic view that goes across the field, down the hill, with the 91 trees, Mount Toby, North Sugarloaf, Sugarloaf, and the range, the Pecumtech Range. And now you're going to have this monstrosity sitting there with these panels that's going to impact the view, impact the value of the property, and impact the butters having to look out at that during, I mean, this isn't the south where we're going to have greenery all around all year long. This is going to be something, the fall's going to come in, the foliage is going to be gone, and these things are going to be sticking out there. They required, I think through the zoning bylaws, to have some type of vegetative buffer zone. I'm just looking at what is going to be an adequate vegetative buffer zone if this project is approved.
Yeah, so we, I think we do have the buffer zones and everything, I'm not sure we talk about height and everything, but that's.
No, it doesn't say anything about height.
Yeah.
But it does say in their application, I believe, that they would put up a vegetative barrier that would have something to do with blocking the fence and the view from Setright Road.
So what's the height of the panels, they're how many feet off the ground, and then what's their tallest point?
Six to eight foot.
Off the ground?
Mm-hmm.
And then how high, at their steepest point?
Eight foot would be the highest that it gets. They're not particularly high.
That's not what the application says.
Wait, they start six feet off, and then they go another eight feet?
Because they're a tracking system, they may rotate out to approximately eight foot.
Eight feet above the six feet?
No, above the ground, total.
The top of the panel would only be eight feet above the ground?
Yeah, they're not, they're not very tall.
They're not very tall.
And then the fence would be six and a half to seven feet, off grid.
And typically, we would, you know, pay to have a vegetative screening put in around fence line of evergreens that would block the visual structure.
And we would just request some guidance from the Planning Board in terms of what a standard vegetative buffer would be for this area, and I believe we specify that in the permit application, that we'd like to have that conversation.
Yeah, I think the stances, we're willing to do it, and we just, would like this discussion to help define it a little bit.
Yeah. But I guess that, we just need to know, as you mentioned, the slopes, and then just, you know, what is the highest point of the panel? I'm not getting, how big is the panel?
Um, together, it's about a three-foot by six-foot panel.
Oh, okay.
That's two, three feet off the ground.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's just single panels?
So there will be two panels, one on each side of the bar, and then the bar will sit about, you know, it depends exactly on how it lays, but probably about three, four foot off the ground, and then rotate up to six to eight foot, depending on where it's at. It's, eight foot would be pretty high, it's not.
Which way does it rotate? I'm just curious.
Oh, so if the sun, you know, north to south, running this way, it'll rotate east to west throughout the day, so it's tracking the sun.
It's just one axis it's rotating on?
Just a single axis tracker.
Where might we see, okay, so you're encountering skepticism here, because the panels that are coming into my mind are much taller, especially the rotating panels that I've seen before, so.
So you're laying the panels sideways, or up and down?
Um.
39 inches high, each side of center, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
They have a slight tilt on.
Do you have any pictures of them?
So, I can pull some up here, yes, sir.
That would be great.
They're not in the, nowhere in the plan scene?
I don't believe we included any.
Yeah, we should certainly get pictures of what these panels look like, especially that they're rotating. And then, so it's probably during the winter when they're the kind of steepest slant, right? Angle? And that's when it's left very little corner or anything, you know?
So I guess the other question is, the application says 10 to 12 feet in it, and so I don't know if that impacts the accuracy of their application or not, but I think in the application, it did say 10 to 12 feet high, and now, although I may have missed it, how would these panels rotate, especially where the houses are to the west? If these panels are rotating and following the sun, as the sun sets, are we going to have any type of residual feedback or glare or reflection from these panels? I don't know much about the reflective nature. I don't know much about the reflective nature of these up close and personal. But that would be a very large concern, as the fall of the sun, that toward the end of the day, that they are now reflecting somehow toward the residences that are abutting that, this project.
So that would be something to clarify for all of us, just with these, I mean, panels have changed over the years, so what is kind of, what goes on with these?
Yeah, for sure. So the panels are now manufactured to be anti-glare, so there's not going to be any residual glare as the panels track the sun. So that's not a worry at all. But again, from a visual obstruction standpoint, we are happy to talk with the board about putting in vegetative screening, evergreen trees, so that it's, you know, it's not impacted by the seasons.
Yeah. They place these things around airports commonly, and, you know, the fear of a glare would be a significant concern if these did reflect, but they're designed to absorb the sun rather than reflect it, so glare is not a particular issue with these.
It's inefficiency.
Right, it'd be an inefficient system.
And the, and is that the only side that would be an issue? Does anybody, anybody in the public have issues with the other sides? We're talking the west side is Set Right Road, right? So I don't know what the other three sides, if you need to do it all the way around there?
To the east, it's 91. To the north, it's even a greater distance before you hit any abutters.
Farmland.
Off a plain road, I'm not sure if there's anybody here that can speak to that, but...
So, I mean, that'd be, you know, that'd be great if you did...
The south is pretty wooded, once you hit that property line.
Yeah.
We're happy to include a vegetative buffer.
And so I guess that would be just the calculation of what's the highest point of the panel, and then have a matching evergreen or something, and how far off, away from the panels is the fence?
10 to 12 feet.
So then the trees would be in front of that?
On the other side, yeah.
And the fence was how high? Fence was how high?
Six.
Usually have them at seven, with a six-inch gap.
Seven.
With a six and a half foot fence, so off the ground.
Sheet four, or sheet three? Okay. Yeah. What page you said on?
It's sheet three of the... All right, David, do you have any other questions?
Yes, I do. With regards to the issue of the setback, I don't know that the board had answered that. In the presentation, they talked about an issue with setback. And again, I think that that setback issue may come, is related to the parcel of land that's across the street from my home, and I think that both they, and we'd like to know what the board's intention is with regards to that setback, and what impact it would have on their design, or your determination as to what to do with the setback issue, which I'm not quite sure if it's not enough setback, or what it is, but they did mention a setback issue.
What setback are you talking about?
From the property line to the start of the, I think there's a 100-foot zone or something in accordance with the bylaws, that says that you, I'm not sure if, somebody mentioned something about a setback, that there's an issue.
Yeah, and so I think, let's re-explain the setback.
Yeah, I'll just... Summarize again, so there's two parcels, both owned by Estraski, and according to the rules, you have to have a setback around the whole perimeter parcel, so that means there's a setback right there on both sides.
It would be internal to the...
So by eliminating that property line, you would eliminate that issue?
Yeah, if that's in effect, we have a gap there.
Okay, then that makes sense.
But your setbacks around the outside of the whole system is more than 100?
Right, right. We maintain that, yes.
All right. And are you, I guess at this point in time, being unfamiliar with your work, you are the granting authority for the special permit, so you'd like to hear comments with regards to the Section 5300 and the conditions there?
Absolutely.
All right. So bear with me for a second, I'll be quick and let my neighbors go on from here, but a few years ago, this community did a couple of votes and a couple of, or master plan that sent some edicts from the citizens, and one of the edicts was in the master plan that one of the nature and character that they wanted to preserve in this community was the rural nature and character, the agricultural character, and the commitment to the farming community. That was done through the survey to the town citizens, and also, I think, a non-binding referendum that we are a farm-friendly community. This project is anything but. I think what the board really needs to consider in this is the domino effect it could have. You have properties that have been taking advantage of the 61A agricultural restriction to provide tax relief, but also to promote the use of agricultural land in continuing with what has become a known farming community. If we are, especially in residential areas, going to now allow this type of project to be placed in residential, what kind of domino effect is this going to have on other hundreds and hundreds of acres in this town that have the same type of agricultural restriction? We were now, we would become, every time somebody has an advantage of a lease, the incentive would be there to do this, and I'm all for people, you know, making a buck off their land, that's what they pay taxes for, but at the same time too, we have to ask, is this the slippery slope we want to engage in? We become, instead of a farming community, we'll become a solar community. And as wonderful as this sustainable energy is, they're ugly. They're hideous to look at, they are big metal monstrosities that have a blue tinge to them that is completely unnatural to the rural character and community, not only of this town, but of our neighborhood. So I think that when we look at what this town has asked its boards and its governing members to look at, we have to start with that philosophy. Farm-friendly rural community, and let's try to maintain that as best we can. In going to the specifics that the board is required to look at, 5321, social, economic, and community needs which are served by this project, all I see in their application is the usual solar mantra, that they're going to have, that they're going to have a, to meet the community needs for sustainable and renewable energy. That's just a solar mantra. It has nothing to do with specifically addressing the needs of this community. How does this project impact the citizens of Deerfield? And it doesn't. It's going to be electricity that's placed on the grid, that's sold, and that's redistributed by the electrical utility company. So it doesn't impact or help Deerfield in any way, shape, or form. You might get a bump up in the release of the agricultural restrictions for becoming a fully taxed piece of property, but again, that's the slippery slope. That's a short-term benefit for the town over the course of 15 or 20, or 20 to 30 years, but a slippery slope with regards to other projects that may follow this of similar nature. So the economic, I'd say that in this particular case, based upon their application and the minimal amount of information that's there, that the mantra shouldn't be enough for this board to rely upon approving the special zoning permit with that limited amount of information that's in there. I think the best, the next one is certainly the neighborhood character and social structures. This has been, through my life, and through Mr. Estraski's life, his father's farm, farmland, this has been nothing but farmland forever. It is in a neighborhood that has some homes, it has been an agricultural area, and to, again, dump these types of panels in that area is disconcerting. Again, vocally for us, but also too for the way forward in the town, and how these projects can pop up in residential or near-residential areas. In a long-term impact, it would impact the town, the economic viability of the town, the desirability of properties in and around these solar farms, and I think it would be detrimental in the long run to the community as a whole. I also think that when you look specifically at this land, that the vegetative buffer zone that they're going to have to come up to try to block, that is going to be astronomically expensive, given that they're going to put in trees that are probably going to have to be somewhere in the area of 30 feet high minimally, to obstruct the view as it goes across and east to the east end of this property. We're not interested in putting in three-foot hemlocks and watching them grow over the next 20 years. That's not something that's going to impact the visibility of this project from the street and from our homes. So I ask the board to really look at the, their application simply states that they are maintaining the agricultural integrity by placing these in an agricultural zone, and certainly they don't impact necessarily the current use of those properties, but it's not agricultural. It may be harvesting sun for energy, but it certainly does not fit the character and nature of the remaining hundreds of acres that are out there that have been farmed continuously and productively for decades. They also cite the impacts on the natural environment, 5325. Again, they rely upon the fact that they're plunking these things down in the middle of an agricultural land, that they're going to plant some, you know, wildflowers, going to grow two feet high, and all is going to be well with the world. These things are not going to fit in with the nature and character, and while there may not be any runoff issues or issues with wetlands, the impact to the natural environment is it's going to make it ugly. It's going to decrease the value of the properties that are currently there, that have building sites that are, that can be built on, and the homes that currently are in that area, their resale value and the tax base to the town. They also cited in their justification, under the requirements, that 5326, the potential fiscal impact, and again, I would suggest to the board that the impact of perhaps some increased tax revenue in the short term is a slippery slope that would cause everybody to pause and think about what we want in the future with these types of projects in residential or near-residential communities. They also talked about the employment in the area. You just heard from the developers themselves that these are going to be jobs that are, or they're going to be requiring construction for a few months. So they're, they cite in their application that there are potentially some employment to the town. If anything, it's short-term employment, much like seasonal employment, and it really doesn't have any impact on the town itself. So in conclusion, I would suggest that we have to, or you have to determine whether or not, in light of everything that's going on, that whether the detrimental impact of this project is going to be outweighed by the benefits. And I would clearly suggest, based upon their written application and their responses to these criteria, that they have minimally complied with the application process and have not adequately met their burden in doing so, and ask the board to deny the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yep, come on up. Just want to say your name and sign in there.
Good evening, my name's Stephen Taylor, I'm here in representing my mother-in-law, Joan Kozakowski, that borders this project on three sides. We have just a few questions about the zoning. Will the zoning stay ag-res for this parcel? So it's under the threshold to be changed to commercial or industrial? I didn't know if there's a...
No, a project doesn't change the underlying zoning, no.
Doesn't change it? Okay. Didn't know that they were going to change it.
And just, you know, just so everybody knows, that in residential ag, we have the zoning bylaws that, you know, we all voted on as a town. So this is large-scale, ground-mounted solar, and it's allowed in all parts of Deerfield by special permit. It's allowed by right in industrial, but it is allowed in residential, Center Village, Commercial 1, 2, PI, EPD, by special permit, so...
Okay.
And that means it can be, large scale means up to 10 acres and 2 megawatts.
Okay.
This is, this is on the...
So they're right, they're right under the 10 acres and at the 2 megawatts. And I think they said the setback will be, the fence will be 100 feet from the property line? From any property lines?
Yeah, the fence has to be...
Yeah, because we border on the north and east, and then north again. So that was just a question, and there will be no impact on stormwater runoff, is what you're saying? Okay, and the rest of my questions were answered earlier, so...
Do you have any concerns about the visual aspect of it, or...
Not this moment, no, just...
I mean, knowing that they talk about it being...
We don't, it's agriculture land that we own, so it's not residential.
All right.
I don't have any, it doesn't impact me.
Your crops don't mind looking at it?
Do you access it by the same route?
No, we access it off a plain road. That's our frontage is off a plain road, so it's not off of there.
All right, good. Have you guys spoken, or have you spoken to your neighbor about, because you can always do that anytime you have questions too, but...
No, we're just here for a few questions, we're not opposed to the project. It's Mr. Estraski's land, feel that he can do what he wants with it, as long as he's in by the town bylaws.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Did you sign in there?
Yes.
Good evening, Tony Martino. 39 Set Right Road. How's this power get to the grid?
You guys can answer that one?
Sure.
How does the power get to the grid?
So it'll be, you know, collected within the array. Everything inside the panel area will be underground. It'll come out through the equipment pad here, and go to overhead wiring. It'll run south, and there's going to be a small, he's been on this adjacent property, and it'll tie into an existing pole out in the corner. That's owned by the utility.
Okay, overhead lines?
Yeah, from here, oh.
Okay, so that's also going to be a visual impact.
And so you said that's, you're getting an easement from the neighbor?
Yes.
For that, which, I don't, does that fall under zoning? I don't think it does, so... Because the original plan, if the neighbor didn't give the easement, I think from my understanding, is the original plan was that it would have to go underground along Set Right. But now this is, this is a different option that they're...
Yeah, the existing utilities along Set Right are buried from the corner north. So it's still going to go overhead along this line, and then go underground.
Yeah. So now you go overhead the other way?
Yeah.
Okay. How high are these lines?
Standard power pole lines, same height as which we'll see.
Okay, so you're going to have a huge power line out in the middle of the field now?
Yeah, and I think one of the advantages of that is for the agriculture. You're not dealing with a trenching line out in the middle of the field somewhere. You know where the line is, it's on a pole, you can see it.
How many poles will be out there?
Less than 15.
Both?
15?
Yeah, 150-foot spacing.
I don't know if you've ever seen the view?
So seven, like seven this way and then seven that way, or 15 one way?
Yeah, 15 total.
All right. And how big is the, are the wires?
Just normal wiring, normal, three-phase wiring, you see on the side of the road.
Same as what runs along Conway Road, connect to those lines.
Just a single, a single wire?
It'll be a three-phase wire.
Three-phase line, yes.
Yeah, from Conway Road, it'll run up Set Right Road. There's a single-phase wire there currently, that will be upgraded to a three-phase line.
All right. Do you have any diagrams or photos of that?
I can...
That'd be helpful.
Include some, for sure.
What was your name, sir?
Tony Martino. So just getting back to what Mr. Decision said, I mean, that's another huge impact on that whole area and the view. I mean, now you're going to have 15 power poles with the power lines going right in the middle of everything, and we're not going to buffer that, correct? We're not going to put anything around there?
That's correct.
Yeah.
You have a suggestion, or...
Underground.
Oh, okay.
Everything else is buried in that area.
Yeah. On people's property? Or on the town, the town road, I guess, is buried?
Correct.
But on people's properties, it's also all buried?
Yes.
All right.
Nothing else I had, except what Mr. Decision said, pretty much speaks for, I can't be as eloquent as that, but he said it all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, can you...
No, I'm just, I'm just looking at the view.
Oh, okay.
You guys should drive by and see what...
Well, we normally do check these out, but, well, we want to hear from you, you're the one that lives there.
No, I'm just...
You know, so...
I don't believe the power lines were proposed.
Well, as you said, there was one, the one coming across the property, but then they were buried. So now, now there's going to be, instead of one above ground, there's kind of two above ground. So when you say the trenching, your first plan was to go over above ground?
Yeah, it was still overhead through the ag field, yes.
And then buried, so that, along the road, that trench doesn't...
And then buried, so that, along the road, that trench doesn't affect agriculture?
Right, and the thinking there was that it was already buried, so it's just gonna go underground as well.
Would the line be buried from your transformer to Set Right Road?
Conceivable, yeah.
The plan right now is not true, but they could, yeah.
Yeah, that could, that could be done, that's not, not a particularly difficult thing to accomplish.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, especially the, the line that's running from the transformer and runs parallel to the south border, I mean, if that's a concern, a visual concern, we could look into burying the line that runs across the ag field, it just, as Kevin alluded to, it could create issues for farming.
Well, if you buried the thing four feet deep, nobody's gonna plow that deep, so. And it would get, you know, that would be one concern of the abutters, that you wouldn't see it.
And that, and that's a different property there too, right? That's not- So you'd need an, would you need an easement, or are you far enough away?
We have the easement agreement already.
Oh, I see, I mean, it's not a different property line to the, from the transformer to the, to the road?
Right.
Well, it looks like it's almost on the line.
It's not.
So this is within Ostrowski's parcel? And then the easement we're talking about is just over the south side of that one?
So that's something to consider, is to just bury it from the transformer out to the road and then-
Yeah, and part of the driver there is this is not owned by, you know, the project owner.
Right.
The owner. And then that combined with this existing buried line here, that's sort of how that came about.
But I think if you stuck to your original plan and just buried that line going from the transformer out to the street, and then keep the one buried along the street, that seems like it wouldn't affect the project at all.
Yeah, well, we won't, we won't be accessing any buried piece of the line as it exists. There's a, there's an above-ground spot where we're tying in along Set Right Road.
Sure.
So we'd pop above ground. I think it would be very reasonable for us and easy to work with to bury the line across the agricultural field. In any spaces, there could be a view shed there, I don't think that would be too difficult.
And the one going from the field out to the street?
We could do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't believe that that would be as much of a visual obstruction, but I mean, we could consider it. It just, it does add cost to, to the project to bury the lines.
Well, I'm hearing that it would, I'm hearing people would notice it, and if there's no other wires above ground in that neighborhood, then it seems silly to add some.
It's above ground where it connects along that neighborhood, along Set Right Road, but I think we can, we can work with you to bury it.
Just so you understand, this, at this corner here is where the above-ground corners lie. This is Set Right Road, and then it turns this way and goes all the way out. And this is where their pad is approximately, so. What they're saying is that they were gonna run poles over here, then connect them. If they go underground, then it would be underground all the way to the corner.
Yeah, that makes sense, right?
To get rid of one issue, yeah.
And as I think you alluded to, you can't hide wires, you know, you can, you can kind of hide the fence a little, but you can't hide wires, so. That sounds good.
How much of that parcel, the one that you were just alluding to, is in protected? Is that in, David mentioned that, is in APR?
Chapter 61.
Yeah.
It's not in APR, it is in chapter 61. We have met with the select board already, and they agreed not to exercise their right of first refusal to allow the project to go forward.
So, just to clarify, you know, that is a, the town, when a landowner takes, is that it? When a landowner takes out of 61, chapter 61A, they have to offer it to the town?
Right.
We already did that.
And that's when the town can say, you know, "We don't like this project, we're gonna take up the offer." So that didn't happen on this case?
And also, if I may make a comment quickly?
Make sure you go in the mic.
Sure, sorry. The idea of this not being of benefit to the community, there is a very real financial benefit in this. We will be negotiating a pilot agreement, that stands for payment in lieu of taxes, with the township, and we will be discussing those numbers directly. We don't know the exact amount yet, but it will be somewhere on the order of what happened with the other solar project, which is about almost $11,000 per megawatt DC per year to the township. So, you know, conceivably, we'll be talking about almost $30,000 a year to the township through this for no strain on the town's resources whatsoever. This'll be something that will generate revenue for the township. And also, in terms of an agricultural nature, it's not producing crops in the same way, but the plants that are laid down underneath it are designed specifically to be pollinator-friendly, to foster bees and small fauna, and with the goal of then the rest of the agriculture around the area thriving and prospering even more. So, we are trying to use, you know, multiple levels here to address many, many different things. I mentioned resilient community, I think this would be a great way to not just produce power that does get used locally. Yes, it is pumped onto the grid, but that is, those electrons will be used by the houses right there. Foster the environmental benefit through, through these pollinator mixes, and pay a not significant amount of income to the township each year.
So that reminded me in the last project where the generator had to find people to buy it, and they, I think they were selling it to Amherst, and then they also offered it to Deerfield. Is that something you can do too?
Yeah, I can speak to that, there's, so, yes, through the SMART program, there is the option to make this a community solar project. We are in talks with aggregators, so there would be a third party that would essentially aggregate demand from the community. That's not set in stone, though, for this project yet, but it's something that we could consider.
And are considering.
Is the, would the price to the town be lower if we?
It's set by, it'll be set by the SMART program, so we're just working with the guidelines put out by the state in terms of all of the different rates that are, that are posted, so.
Have any projects finished under the SMART program?
It hasn't launched, it launches in, well, anywhere from late September to the end of the year, nobody, nobody really knows. So, we're trying to get our permits in order so that we can apply underneath it. And time is an important factor in this, because the, as the program fills out, the incentives decline and become less attractive as pieces go.
Have you done other projects in Massachusetts?
Yeah, we've done some with Boston Scientific primarily, and we have several others that are in a similar stage to this, this level in this project, but none under the SMART program yet, because it hasn't launched yet.
Questions, concerns?
Todd Burns, 31 Set Right Road. So just a couple of follow-ups, so just on the wires, I just wanna hit that again, make sure I understand. Are we in agreement, are we saying that that should be under wire and we're not considering above ground? If so, I don't have any questions on it, but if we're not saying that, I have more questions.
So you would prefer they be buried?
I would prefer they be buried. I'd like to understand how many wires we're talking about? We talked about 15 poles, is that 15 additional poles with the new look? And we have poles that were already in the plant, so there's more than 15 poles in the total project? You know, I'm assuming it's not one little wire, so just how many?
So, let's just say this, so it's, I don't know how to say this, but it would make it easier for us to approve a special permit. I'm not saying we will, but it would make it easier if they were buried, so can we just say they're gonna be buried?
Sure.
From the transformer to the, to the pole?
That can be, if, that can be a condition of the, of the special permit, we can work with that.
All right.
Great. Run a roll. Leading into the, so the transformer, heard a lot of talk about it, but no specifics. How big is it? Does it sit on a construction pad? What is, what's the deal?
Yeah, it's on a, it's on a small concrete pad, a couple hundred square feet, it'll be in an enclosure. We could dig out the specific sound rating if you wanted it, but normally 10 to 20 feet away from you, you don't even hear them.
So, I would want it.
Certainly 1,000 feet away, you're not gonna hear anything.
I believe it's 60 decibels.
And how big is it? It's 200 square feet, how tall?
Six, seven feet tall, I mean, it depends on the vendor, but not much taller than your eyes.
And that's gonna be inside the fence? Okay, I mean, sound would obviously be a concern.
Yeah, again, it can't be detected outside of the property.
They're constructed so as not to be specifically.
And another benefit, it shuts off at night.
That was a big, that was a concern, that one, that huge one up there.
It's a neighbor's, turn the lights on, is that, no.
So, let's see. Construction, so three to five months, but we don't have a hard date, so we don't really know how long. What's the construction traffic gonna be like, and how do we control the comings and goings?
So this site doesn't need any real land clearing, you know, there's no trees to cut or anything like that, so that initial phase of land clearing will be pretty quiet. A few loads of excavators in there, and then first thing would be to get the erosion control in, and then the gravel road, so dump trucks with gravel. Once the access is in, you'll have a delivery of all the racking, so that'll kind of come in a wave over, you know, probably within a week, most of that stuff will show up on flatbeds. They'll get that all in, and then you'll get another wave of all the panels and the wiring and that kind of stuff.
So we're gonna have flatbed trailer trucks driving down Set Right Road?
Yes.
Have you guys been on Set Right Road?
How many, how many are you talking?
I don't really wanna guess, but that, that did play into my comments about approving that last section of the dirt road there, 'cause that obviously turns into just, you know, dirt farm road.
I'm not concerned about the dirt road, I'm concerned about when you drive by my house with a flatbed trailer truck. I mean, that's a sharp corner, there's kids on it, how are you gonna control that?
Well, it is a public road, correct?
It is. So you're not gonna control it, you don't, you don't have concern about control?
So all these vehicles are licensed to be on public roads?
Okay, okay, so they don't-
By law, so.
So we have no concern about construction vehicles on these roads for three to five months?
Well, what I'm hearing is not, they come and they deliver things, it's not, they're not gonna be up and down the road every day, are they? They come in and they-
After that, it's gonna be, you know, laborers' vehicles, passenger cars, pickup trucks.
But you're accessing it, I don't understand, I thought you were accessing it by this, this dirt road down the side, so you're not actually cutting across Set Right, right?
How are you gonna-
How are you accessing the work site then?
Take the turn on Set Right, go north?
Oh, okay, okay. All right, all right. I just don't, oh, I see that access right there.
It's on this one right here.
Got it, got it, got it.
That goes along that north property.
So how long will we have the gravel trucks coming? How long does that take?
I don't think they could get that in a week, honestly. With the quarry right on the corner, I don't think that'd take very long.
Okay.
And, you know, if it's a public safety issue, then we'd get the Deerfield police and see if it's, so many trucks are coming in one day, that's, it's a safety issue, then we gotta get the police involved, and that would be paid for by the, you know, the applicant, of course. But that's, I think at this point, a little beyond this, that's, that's more if the neighbors see it a problem, notify the police.
One, one thing we do sometimes is we agree to a condition that says, as construction is drawing closer, and we have some of these logistics figured out, you can sit down with the fire department, the police department, whoever you think is appropriate, figure out if we need flaggers, signage, any of that kind of thing. Work hours.
Yeah, that's, I mean, we have work hours in town, right, and then if we need to, if it's-
Yeah, we also, it's also on projects, had the name of who to call if there's any-
Right, I remember, that should be posted at the main sign at the entrance to the project, yeah. Thanks.
Oh, am I done?
No.
No, you're good.
I thought you, you have others?
I didn't know if I was excused. So, so we talked about, you know, what the impact is going to be to views and everything else. Can tell you, when people come to the house, one of the first things they say is, "Leave that view." With this here, I'm incredibly concerned that they're not gonna say that. Consistent with that is, I would assume, part of what my home value is based on is that view and how you look. So when my property value drops, am I gonna get some sort of abatement for that? Or how does, how does that get taken into account? 'Cause I think we need to consider, sort of what Dave talked about before, is what's the overall impact of this? So you're adding some tax revenue, potentially, I heard, payment in lieu of taxes, so maybe you aren't adding tax revenue. But you're adding some tax revenue, you're gonna also lose some tax revenue when your property values start to drop. So I think that needs to be something to consider. And then also the, so, I'd like to hear more about payment in lieu of taxes. How that works, so, so I don't understand a lot of things. So, in lieu of taxes tells me you're not gonna pay taxes, you're gonna give us money instead, but I thought you were gonna give us taxes. Why not just pay the taxes? I don't understand.
Well, there is, there is some tax on property. So if the, if the value of this property, if the equipment on this property goes up, we, the town can tax it.
Right, right.
Sometimes it's hard to know what that is, I think, and so then the town often come up with agreements that just have a set amount. So I'm not sure, do we call it even payment in lieu of taxes, or?
Yes.
It's, it's a little bit ambiguous with these, whether they should be counted as, as real property or personal property. And so the state, in order to, to kind of negate that confusion, has issued a guideline and a mandate of payment in lieu of taxes, instead of directly paying taxes. This is how we handle whether it counts as real or personal, is just sort of a sidestep and pay the town taxes. So it will be directly with the assessors, and same as if property taxes were assessed, but it's just unclear what the exact mechanism from the state would be, so this is how the state has decided to, to handle it. And they call it a pilot, it's an industry standard term.
And that's with the assessors or with the select board?
The assessors.
It'll be the assessors and the select board that we talk to both.
One more thing.
Yep.
So, so I heard, you know, as far as what they've done in Massachusetts, I heard, I think I heard something that was more of a industrial application, but what have you done? Or what's been done by this company in Massachusetts in this type of setting? Or somewhere else, can we see examples of, you know, these things with how they're covered? But where has this been successful, and how has it benefited the community?
Yeah, that's a-
Sure.
Good question.
We're happy to provide a, unfortunately, I just forgot to print it, but a statement of qualifications that shows the projects that we've, we've worked on and developed, and the list is quite substantial and-
Have you done any in a, in a neighborhood like this?
We have in Connecticut. So we moved into Massachusetts to begin pursuing this project specifically for the SMART program. We were not involved in the SREC program, so this is our first foray into this type of project in Massachusetts. We did work on industrial-scale projects previously, as I mentioned, with Boston Scientific, but this will be our first underneath the SMART program. Again, that was just because we, we moved into the area based on seeing the program and working with it. But happy to provide either an email or hard copy, our statements of qualification, so you can know our expertise in this, and we've done this.
And then maybe a similar project in Connecticut, that's not too far, we're interested in having some sense of how that looks and worked in another setting.
Yeah, and I don't know if it helps, but I'm on Amherst, and I've been doing probably 90, 95% of my work in solar for four years. Did the job at the quarry with these guys a few years ago. It's pretty much all I do. And I kind of sit in the seat of facilitating what the developer wants to do, fitting it in with your roles and the site resources, and just trying to come to a place where everybody's comfortable with it.
So then, I mean, we see these around a lot, do you know, do you know of some around here that aren't done by this company, but that are in a place that has houses that look at them? 'Cause that is a question, the property values, I'm not sure there's scientific data that says property values go up or down, but-
It's, it's hard to find good literature on that topic that's really conclusive and reliable. We did do a couple down by Hampshire College that aren't strictly residential, but it's a pretty busy area with some high visibility. And if that's something you're interested in, we could find a few more, and give you some locations to drive by.
Does the Hampshire College one, I know of a couple of, do they tilt, I don't, I'm not staying still on-
No, those are, those are fixed, north of Atkins Market there.
That, that actually brings up the other question about noise, does the tracking create noise?
No.
No.
No, I mean, nothing above ambient noise, yeah.
Yeah.
The only one I've ever seen, the tracking one was a rot.
Yeah, I mean, they move so slowly, these are tracking the azimuth, so they move so slowly that you can't hear it.
So I think, you know, again, this is, you're, so we did the big, the big one up in the industrial area, and that was an industrial area, so it was different. So this is really the first large scale in, in a residential agriculture in Deerfield, so we do wanna, it'd be good for us to get a lot of information on this. I, I think your, your point is well taken, that you're seeing, we're seeing them more everywhere. So, and we have these bylaws, so we sort of wanna know what the possibilities are here. I, I'm, I was surprised that they're not any higher, that, you know, that they're only eight feet tall. Again, depends on where you, where you're sitting, and whether you see it or not, but eight feet doesn't, I thought they were...
Yours are really big.
I know, the ones up on the quarry are much taller than that.
On Keats Road.
They keep a low profile with the, with the tracker?
Mm.
So...
So I guess I have, so I have a couple things, so that's, that's a big one, is get some, so if you could give us some examples, and even, you know, either we could call around to those towns, or solicit you guys to make some phone calls even, find out if there's any, anything about sort of property values and things like that.
If I may, we have had studies done for other projects where neighbors were concerned about their property values and the, the impact of property values to stop to be negligible.
Using match pair analysis, so looking for houses that sell similar, similar houses that sell and find, found that their values are negligible, the differences in them, so we can, we can send that.
Yeah, if you have that information. And then I guess I'd like more information about the, well, the storm, stormwater and the plantings, what you're planning. I know I'm not qualified to make a judgment on that.
And also, also you mentioned spec sheets on the panels, right?
Yes.
Do we need them?
That's right, you're, you're listing things on, I'm just adding that one thing on there, you need to say in it, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Todd.
Spec, spec sheets on the panels and, you know, photos and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, I think spec sheets should, should have everything, size, mounting, mounting way, basic mounting of orientation and all that.
And, so I guess I, I wanna ask the board about a, some kind of peer review for the stormwater and, and the plantings, it doesn't seem like a huge, big major thing.
Sounds like a lid type of program, doesn't sound like a regular, you know, regular stormwater, you know what I mean?
Right, no, there's no...
Doesn't it to you, doesn't it to you, sound like a lid program rather than a...
No catchment basins or anything, it's just grounds and capture in the water up to now, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically a before and after analysis, so you've got row crop out there now that's, in reality, not fully vegetated, you know, there's dirt rows in between the plants, and it's not the deepest root system.
Well, we did, we did some, we did some stuff with Debbie, her last name?
Deborah.
Who did lid type programs.
Low impact development.
Low impact developments, where they set up a garden, and that garden was the stormwater, you know what I mean? So if you're related to that...
It's a native vegetation that once it really sets up, you know, it gets a real deep root system on it.
Right, but there's, there's the ability to, to describe how you would do that and justify the stormwater by lid projects. And it sounds like that's what you're headed for, but I'm not sure.
That's what it is, yeah.
So my question to the board is, can we just review that ourselves, or do we wanna maybe hire someone to look at it quickly?
Well, they've been plowing and harrowing this thing every year for eons, and now they're gonna plant it and it's gonna stay in grass, so I think that's an improvement.
So it's gonna decrease any water flow?
Decrease water runoff, yes.
Yeah, it's gonna take the water out.
They're gonna stop plowing and harrowing it, so you're gonna improve things.
And, and the length of these panels is six feet at the most, so...
Yeah, it's a three foot by six foot panel, and there will be two of them mounted on the, on the tracker bar.
Actually, if they're tracking, they're not gonna dump water in the exact same place all day long, they'll actually distribute the water.
Right, right.
Well, it's only gonna track in one axis, so it's not gonna, it's not gonna distribute it around, all the way around it, it's just gonna distribute from here back to here as it rotates, as I understand, right?
Along one axis, yeah, so, you know, beginning of the day, it'll face east as the sun comes up and then tracks, so if it rains at noon, it'll run across evenly, if it rains at 4:00 PM, it'll run to the, the west side, and if it rains at 10:00 AM, it's the east.
Just in one axis only.
But it's less runoff than like those fixed ones up there?
Right.
All right, so, so just wanna finish that question, and then I'll get right back to you, so...
They won't be out there cultivating headlands, you know, on the end of all the rows, they turn it into dirt.
And the type of vegetation, you've got that listed, so we can just...
I know that's...
It's on the detail sheet.
We'll see next, yeah.
And if, and the ground is not cultivated, then you're not having dust blow into your house. I know, I know I get that on Circo Lo Street, when they're, when they're plowing and it's not in, in, you know, vegetation, and it's, the dust is blowing into your house. So it sounds like a positive in that fashion.
Can you talk a little bit about, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so, all right, we just wanted to finish that one, so, in the comment?
Um, just, you know, Tony Martino?
Yeah.
Getting back to the, Martino.
Martino, okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you saying it, so.
Getting back to the dust, we're gonna put a gravel road in, I heard that part, how are we gonna keep the dust down though? 'Cause how many, how many truck trips are we talking?
A water truck's pretty standard, if we, I mean, that'd be part of the erosion control inspections, so if we had a dry period and we're not dealing with rainfall, but we're dealing with dry conditions of dust, we can just water it, multiple dimes a day if needed.
And how many truck trips total?
I can't say, sir.
But you're talking during the construction period?
Yeah.
'Cause after that, there's no...
After that, there's none, right? Just a...
Correct, during the constructions.
Yeah, once, once the, once the project's in place, you're gonna get no more dust.
Five hundred trucks, thousand trucks?
Well, what we talked about earlier was, if this goes forward, then prior to any construction, we would get a whole schedule, and that would then tell us more accurately how many trucks, what days, what hours, and if it's during a...
I'm just trying to get a rough, a rough number, I mean, how many panels we, how many panels do we have?
Well, we can come up with an estimate before we see you again, just based on...
All right.
The materials that are gonna need to show up to the site.
I'm just wondering how, why that matters, I mean, I'm curious too, but it's, okay.
Hundred trucks, ten thousand trucks? Somewhere in the middle? Just wondering, that's all.
We can come up with an estimate for the next meeting.
All right.
I mean, you should have a pretty...
I think they don't wanna give a wildly wrong number.
I'm not gonna guess, yeah, be wrong.
All right, so number of trucks, number of truck trips?
So getting back to the water, what do you do other than plant? Because right in your area there, when it rains heavy, there's a river that runs through there, small stream.
What's your question, Todd?
I'm, I'm just curious how that affects the, the construction and...
Well, I mean, that'd be monitored during construction, you know, until vegetation sets up, make sure that it's stable, that's part of the EPA's SWIP program, it's a requirement. This'll be out there once a week, and then after every significant rainstorm. And if things are moving around, we'll take measures to keep it in place until the vegetation sets up.
There's, there's, I mean, measures, 'cause you had originally said that this is gonna be non-permanent, and in twenty years, we're gonna take this out. So, it measures would be drainage, if so, where would it drain, things like that?
It'd be temporary stabilization, mulching, tracking with equipment to keep things in place.
So to keep it on the property.
Right.
During construction, but once it's in there, it's, it just automatically takes care of it, right?
Right, once that's all grown in, you won't need to do anything.
You may wanna go look out there right now, as to how this land changes when it rains very heavily.
If it's not vegetated now, you're gonna have a big mess, with this, it'll be vegetated, so there won't be any, you won't have any of that mess.
Is it flow to the, these are wetlands to the east, does it flow there?
You're assuming that there's not gonna be any flow from the neighboring property, that's what you're saying, that this goes from the other side of Plain Road across the Plain Road and then down through the fields south toward this parcel and sits out there when it gets very wet.
It's a river.
It's a river, I mean, you, you can see where it crosses Plain Road, you drive down the gully before you get to the, the end of Sand Gully Road, to wash out every, every stream, and after every, every storm.
If I can just put it from now.
Yeah, 'cause there is, there is the wetlands there to the east.
So you got this here, Set Right, there's a barn somewhere, I'm guessing right about here. On the east side of the barn, all the water from the north side comes right through here, disperses down to the swamp area, the swamp over here, and then some of it across 116 into the old stream. So, I guess my question is, once that water starts washing everything away...
You made an assumption that it's gonna wash things away, and I don't necessarily agree with you, so.
So what is, what is the farm, what is, what is the farm crop there that's now that...
Right now, there's, there's potatoes, mostly some corn, cabbage.
What is the, what is that washed into the crop there?
It just, it makes a chin, like a small, like a small stream, yeah. It's, they were out there today with a payload, fixing the road so they can harvest the potatoes. There's a swimming pool at one end of Set Right Road. It went out there, one of the farmers went out there and dug literally a twenty-foot deep swimming pool. It's full, it's full of water.
So one of our...
All that water comes down, and I guess, yeah, my concern would be, can't wash over these, these solar panels, and then, at some point, do we need to make more construction out of there to divert the water?
Well, maybe you have to do that now, too, it sounds like it's terrible. I mean, like currently, it must be...
But there's no structures out there.
Right, but these are not habitat structures, they're just, they're...
No, but if, if it affects them, then that, there's gonna be more construction down the road.
I mean, one of our things we definitely wanna...
Talk about the de...
Talk about is it, it's, no water can leave this site, onto someone else's site.
Right, well...
Can't, can't get worse than it is now, and, and that's, we're trying to say that these plantings make it actually seem like it'll be better in the future.
Okay, the plantings out there now are not helping, so.
Right, that's was the point.
That agricultural nature of our area, I mean, that is, it's like siloed...
I'm just trying to point out one of the problems with the, with the site.
Right, but the, the issue here that we deal with is that we don't want water that's generated on this site to go elsewhere.
Right.
But because there's three hundred acres to the north of this, and all the water comes down 'cause it's low, it naturally goes through that swamp area, if it passes through these people's land, that's, we can't control that. We just wanna make sure that the panels or anything that they do there doesn't cause an issue.
My question is, are they gonna need to do more improvements in the future if this becomes a problem? But, I'm just trying to get that question answered before, just so everybody knows that there is an issue out there with water, and it's, it's obvious if you go out there and look. You can see right where it goes.
All right, so I guess that's a good, well, to you guys, you're gonna figure that out.
So we're concerned, can we talk a little bit about the, sorry, I have another question, about the decommissioning, the...
Are you, is Tony upset?
No, I'll sit here and listen, and I'll ask my next question.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, hold on, I took notes the fancy way here. The acronym, there was, you said something about time being in the essence to get into a certain program?
Sorry.
What, why is that important? Is it...
Basically, the, as the bit, there's, it's, it's called an adjustable block program, and there's just a certain amount of capacity in each block, and as you move from block to block, the tariff that is paid by the utility gets lower, and so the economic viability of the project gets...
So if the utility's not subsidizing this project, it doesn't, it doesn't work?
No, that's not.
The utility will be purchasing it based on the state's program.
Somebody subsidizes, the state subsidizes.
This, this state's the one who put it out, yeah.
Okay.
What does SMART stand for?
Solar Massachusetts Renewable Target. I didn't come up with that.
I think, was that kinda what you were looking for, was what that SMART stood for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a Massachusetts program, and it's also the federal program.
Yeah, it's underneath the Department of Energy Resources, DOE R, and they're finalizing the various pieces of it right now.
And I mean, I, you know, this is, the state wants to get more renewable energy, so this is why there's incentives for it, right?
Okay.
And I think...
I think in theory, it means that there's no coal or, or gas or oil charging, you know, plants to, to make this energy, so it's replacing it. I think that, that's what I understood it to be, but...
Yeah, it's just, it's a shame to use a beautiful area, I mean, a quarry is one thing, and I would be interested to see other projects in an area like this, if we could come up with it.
Yeah, sure, we have profiles, especially of a project in Connecticut.
What size plant would that be down on, like, by the Sunderland Elementary School on 116, are you familiar with that? What size project is that?
I don't know how big it is.
Don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, that's only a couple acres, probably.
I don't think that's a...
I didn't, yeah, probably not very big.
There's another one on 116, near the Amherst Town Line as well, it's a pretty good size.
Yeah.
And then, of course, there's one down there at Fairview Farms in Watley, there's, the, the, a lot of, most of the farms now are putting them on their property, so I don't know how big they are, but it seems like we're seeing a lot of them coming up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And I, I just remind people, the, the big one up in the quarry was not actually in the quarry, it was, they knocked down a lot of, they cut down a lot of trees, actually, and so there's, there are trade-offs to all these, something else was there before solar panels came.
Hi, Stephen Taylor, quick question, you guys said you're gonna gravel the road, which, what are we talking about, from Set Right Road past Mr. Ostrowski's barn to the project? Or are we talking from the end of Blacktop to Mr. Ostrowski's road? That'll be a town road, that's in pretty poor shape, it's a farm road.
Yeah, we felt like it starts to deteriorate pretty bad here.
After the last house, it turns to a seasonal farm road.
Yeah, so that, that was the main section to focus on, and then the access into the project.
Okay, and...
You think this...
Yeah, no, no, the Blacktop, I was just concerned about from the last house to the Mr. Ostrowski's land where the road would go down, it's a farm road, and it's, it's not, it's not made for big trucks, only for like seasonal farm use. And when you were asked about, like, truck traffic, obviously, you've done some homework, you know how much gravel you're gonna bring in, and how much these panels and structures take up on a truck, so you pretty much know how many trucks are gonna go across this construction.
Yeah, I think we've admitted to putting together an estimate of all that, yeah.
I mean, you must know already, I mean, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be here tonight if you know how much gravel you're bringing in.
That, that's a few steps down the process, really, I mean, we need to, to get through the permitting, and then the construction logistics really kick in.
So you haven't done any homework to see if it's feasible for you to do this, I mean, you're gonna bring like ten loads of gravel in, or you're gonna bring two hundred loads of gravel in, it's a big, big difference.
So to answer your initial question, we know it's feasible, or else we wouldn't be here.
Okay, I mean, you must have an idea, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, so, we're gonna find that out.
Okay.
That's all we can tell you.
I'm just, residents were asking a question, it doesn't pertain to me, I don't live here on the street.
Okay, so we're not...
But it just seemed, it just seemed that they weren't getting the answer they wanted, and somebody would know that, I'm gonna do a project, it's gonna cost X amount, there's gonna be X amount of materials gonna be used.
Okay, thank you. This isn't the end of it.
I know, I understand.
We've asked questions, we've been, we've been told we're gonna get responses.
It's gonna cost X amount, there's gonna be X amount of materials gonna be used.
Okay, thank you. This isn't the end of it.
I know, I understand.
We've asked questions, we've been, we've been told we're gonna get responses.
Okay.
That's, so.
And I just, as a taxpayer, just wanted to know that road. That's why I wanna know if it was gonna be maintained, because after the construction process and a lot of heavy traffic, you know, there's the highway department, now I have to go out there and maintain it. And the next thing is wintertime, that, the snow plowing stops at the Blacktop. And the town doesn't maintain the road only in the, on season for the farmers. Is this company gonna plow out to their spot? I don't know if they have to go out there or not during the winter months.
So snow removal is not, we would not remove snow unless there needed to be emergency access to the site?
So you would take care of plowing the town road to your access road?
If, if there would, if there's emergency.
Okay, I just, I didn't know if now you're gonna ask the town to plow the additional quarter mile in to the site.
So those are the kind of things. So also part of this, both the site plan and the special permit, we get, we check with all the town offices.
Yep.
And so we're gonna check with the DPW, we're gonna check with fire and.
Because they said it's less impact for taxes than, you know, per se, having homes and sending kids to schools and ambulances and police and such. So that was my only question, about the storm removal.
No, but I think that brings up the emergency access, because I think for the one up on the quarry, we actually said it was an emergency road out the other side that had to be maintained. So that's a good, a good question, is how do you maintain those, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Because once, once it's set up and running, you don't have much reason to go in and out, but you still, you still do need to have access to it.
Yeah, exactly.
And I think the fire.
About once a month, someone would access the site once a month, and as needed, to perform routine maintenance.
And then whether this would have to be accessible to emergency trucks, fire trucks, all year long, and that's something we're gonna talk about, too.
The disconnect will be down at the corner.
On, were they going to the pole?
Yeah.
The main transformer?
Down at this?
Down at the corner of Setright.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
So that's where it goes from the private developers' equipment to the utilities' equipment. So at that point, there's a shut-off that's accessible by the fire department, by utility.
All right. Any other comments?
Sorry, back again.
All right.
I'll be brief. Two questions. One, that was a great point about the road. So just following up on that. So they're gonna go out a couple times during the month, during the winter. Be really interested to know how they're gonna get there, because there's about a seven or eight-foot blockage before you can get out onto the road from where the town stops plowing. So before they come back, I'd love to see the answer to how they're gonna get there, especially if there's some sort of issue with the transformer. Because you're not walking, you're not driving, unless you got a snowmobile, you're not getting out there. The other question I have is pretty simple and straightforward. If this special permit is approved, what exactly is the benefit to the town? I haven't heard that.
You, beyond the power that's generated and used, there, there's the pilot agreement that gets used, or paid to the town, so, you know.
So, so I, beyond the power, how does that benefit me?
Uh, there's a lot of money that comes to the township directly through the project, through what's called the payment in lieu of taxes, which is significant in terms of the amount of income it generates passively without any direct maintenance or, or running by the town. Also allows the town, the power used in the town offsets carbon footprints, and it helps create a cleaner environment.
So when do we understand what that payment in lieu of taxes looks like? To give you an example, the current solar rate that's in, that generates around sixty-eight thousand dollars a year to the town. And it also, we purchase about eight percent of, about fifteen percent of our power at an eight percent discount of our already discounted rates. So those are some of the benefits to the community.
I'm sorry, who benefits, who gets the eight percent discount?
The town does.
The town does.
The town. We purchase energy through a third party, but it comes from there. We, I'm not sure how it works, but that's, we get a discounted rate on that.
Do the people that have to look at the panels get a discounted rate?
Excuse me?
Do people who have to look at the panels get a discounted rate?
Actually, the town's entering into another agreement with another company, and we're, I forget what it's called, where everybody in town has an opportunity. Or the way that's gonna go, and I wanna get.
Well, is that the community solar?
Yeah, community solar, that we're, we're gonna be involved with, and all the residents are actually automatically signed up. You have to choose to opt out of the program. But if you do stay in it, then you would get a discount. I don't know what that discount would be at this point. But there's other aspects, like they say, we get credits as a green community in the town would be. We could benefit by other grant monies as well.
So just.
We get different kinds of grants to, you know, buy LED lights.
On the streets.
Oh, in our buildings as well, but we're currently applying for grants to replace a lot of our streetlights with LEDs. That could just, you know, save this town, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars a year, just as.
I know when they changed some lights in front of my house, all of a sudden, the light was on the street. It wasn't in my bedroom window, so. Those LEDs seem to not only save money, but they also are so focused and so directed that.
We, we just currently, I believe it's through the Green Communities Act that we received, I think, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to replace the inefficient boilers at the elementary school and one at the frontier as well.
So just so, you know, I think, I think part of our job in a special permit is to take all these things into consideration, and it's hard to match up exactly, you know, who pays and who benefits.
Right, yep.
When, when the town passed this bylaw that said we'll allow large-scale in, extra-large scale in, I think the town has an energy committee. I think they were in favor of it. There's, I mean, there's a lot of people who are in favor of solar and renewable energy. And then, and then it gets into the view thing. I know, it's, it's hard. So I think we're talking about how to mitigate things, burying the lines, putting up shrubs, you know, bushes. I mean, all these things are gonna be helpful.
Yep, I, I appreciate all that. Just on top of all that, there's just a lot of vague, there's a lot of ambiguity in statements. So it'd be great when I come back to hear some more detail, because it, it sounds like for people that are applying for a permit, they don't have a whole lot of the details yet. So that'd be great to see.
You've, you gotta, did you get a, did you look at their, I mean, they did.
Well, they can't answer questions tonight.
They, but they did answer a lot of questions. And now they're gonna get back, now they're gonna get back with.
I agree. It'll be nice when they come back and they give some answers to questions that weren't answered.
That's why we have these meetings, and if we need multiple meetings, we'll do that.
Okay.
And, you know, when you talk about in a hurry, we're not in a hurry.
Okay.
The town's not in a hurry. We wanna get the answers.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't, we don't try to go slow either. So I, I would actually make a recommendation that we continue the public hearing and get some more information. I wanna make sure that we have all of our questions, and do we need any other third-party information, I guess is my other question.
I still wanna talk about decommissioning.
Oh, yeah.
You know, an escrow account that helps set that up.
Yeah, so we would, we prefer like a charity bond, which is, if you're not familiar, it's basically an insurance product where we pay a premium each year. And if we, if the town would need to access those funds, then they can access those funds.
I think when we talked about the other projects, that the panels and stuff are worth money at the end of their lifetime.
Exactly.
So that there's a, there's a, there's a built-in salvage value there at the end.
Correct, yeah. And I believe the estimate that SWCA put together does not include any salvage value, so. And typically, what we would find is that the salvage value would be in excess of any decommissioning costs. So that helps to mitigate a lot of the risk there.
And just to be clear, you're, you're renting the land?
Yes.
For this twenty-year or whatever period is? So it's really the land owner, the property owner, who's really responsible for cleaning up their land to some extent, but.
But in our agreement, we, we've agreed to, to make sure that everything is removed, so there's no risk to, to Mr. and Mrs. Ostrowski in terms of getting stuck with panels on their property.
All right, anything else? So ideally, the applicant, you'd agree to continue the hearing till the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I, do you mind if I read back my notes just to make sure I've got everything?
Yeah, so let's see what, we all, we all might have taken notes, so make sure that we know what things we're gonna be looking for next time.
You had another question?
They passed them out last meeting.
Did you have another question?
Nope.
Okay, okay. So, um, some additional literature on the technologies of the panels. There is a spec sheet included in the application, but happy to provide some pictures, if that's sufficient.
And that's, you know that's the panel you're going with?
There's a little bit of variability in terms of what the final panel will be, and that'll be finally agreed upon in the building permit.
The thing I got from it was that maybe we would get some kind of instructions to how they, how they function, you know.
This doesn't have it?
I, I don't know that it does. I didn't see it. In other words, how does the tracking work?
A little more info on the single-axis tracker.
What's the arc that it takes getting from east to west, and, you know, that kind of thing?
Yeah, that's. Okay. And then we were gonna get you an example of, of the studies we had done to, to show the negligibleity on real estate prices.
So two, two separate things in a way, some specs on another, or some details about another project, and if you wanna present that.
Certainly.
Yeah, so we'll send you a statement of qualifications that has a couple of bios of projects that are similar to this, especially one in Connecticut on a farm that we did with single-axis trackers, as well as a list of other projects that we, we've worked on and completed. So that'll, that'll be one of the things, and then, yeah.
Some additional detail on the vegetative screening plan. And would, if, if there is, you know, we're happy to be amenable to the, to the neighbors within reason. So if there's a specific plant that they have that they would like to recommend, you know, that would, we would take that into consideration, so.
What was that again? Vegetative what?
Vegetative screening, so to screen the defense line in the array from the, from this line of sight.
So I'm just, the stormwater plan, management plan. Is, is there anything else in the, in the box? It's not in the, it's not in the main folder here. Is there a separate report?
There's two hydrology sheets.
Oh, so there's just a couple sheets in the.
Summarizes all the counts. Put a text summary together, if necessary.
That's in Appendix F, stormwater report. Because I didn't.
I don't, I don't think there's a written report submitted. I think it was all on the two plan sheets.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's where I wanna have, you know, unless you're gonna, I'd like to have someone review that. I haven't.
You are.
Review the stormwater management plan. I don't think any of us are, have to.
It doesn't sound like they really have one as such, but from what I, what I heard, it sounded like they're using lid technologies.
Right.
That's the thing they should clarify on, is if you think that it's gonna be lid-type processes, tell us about that.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping. We can summarize that in text.
That, that has come up before with other people, and they actually created gardens that, you know, and you're gonna have one big garden from the sound of it, so you ought to get somebody that knows about li, lid-type technologies and can say, okay, this is how we're gonna soak up all the water, and these plants are gonna do, you know, and, and like that. And that's, that's a science that's still, that's being used today, you know, in places for stormwater control.
Yeah, absolutely.
That kinda sounds like where maybe you ought to be headed. I don't know.
Yeah, SWA has people on staff that can.
We've already completed the calculations for that, and they're included, and just, you know, made a little more explicit in the text how, how that works.
So in.
Because also, also in stormwater, you know, there's gonna have to be some kind of requirement of, what if something should come in and kill all the vegetation and all that, wouldn't they? I don't, I don't know. Isn't, isn't there supposed to be a maintenance thing with stormwater that says it takes into consideration what happens?
The maintenance is more for these spillways or, or dikes or piping and stuff like that, but there, none of that exists. It's just, you know, they just let it soak into the ground, it's just now.
Right, but what he's saying, if something went wrong with the plants, then you gotta replant it.
Yeah, you'd wanna make sure they establish and stay healthy and.
I mean, nor, normally, you know, the, any kind of thing, if it's, like they're saying, that when they have drained systems, they have to keep them clean. They have to clean the manholes, they have to, you know, the basins and that thing, but you're in a different ballpark there. If you're counting on just the vegetation to take care of, of all the water that's gonna come in, what happens if the vegetation isn't there? Or if it, you know, something happens, I don't know. I'm not, I don't know what the maintenance should be, but that should come up, I would think, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we should cover that.
So in, in this, in your, in your application, it says stormwater report, it says to be submitted under, under separate cover. That's why I was looking for a separate. What you're saying, there's just two sheets?
Yeah, I'm not sure what that's, we had all the counts on those plan sheets.
All right, so let's, let's just make sure by the next meeting that it's all, I think we have it all, but. I'll have someone in the office go through and make sure it's all organized. All right, what else on your list?
Um, and then we wanted an estimate of the number of trips that, there'll be, I guess, the number of trucks that will be passing through.
Yeah, and, and given the constraints, you know, the road, just some more explanation about, you know, and then as we get further into construction, whether you are gonna need police or anybody escorts.
So that's, that's it for my notes, if you guys had.
And then the.
Bury the lines.
Bury the lines.
Sure.
Number of trucks.
Yeah.
And then how do you access the site during the winter?
Okay, sure.
And then we, if you can find out what our fire or police would require.
Okay, sure.
And then when do you think the discussions on the pilot will be, if you happen?
So we're, this week, we're, we'll be having a conversation. We don't, I don't, I don't anticipate a full negotiation, but.
But we'll have more information at the next.
Yeah, there should be more information at least.
All right, those are a lot of good things. And then the A and R to do the.
To make the one.
To make the one property?
Oh, yeah, right.
We could just do that at the next meeting.
Okay.
That's gonna require a chat to come in, or send somebody to represent.
Well, it'll be the applicant.
Yeah.
And that'll be under the landowners.
Yeah, which is, all of these still are, actually. Thanks, Ed. Oh, I'll just double-check the administrative things with the application.
And do we need to get Pat involved in, in any of this?
Yes, so I would like her to review all the, I mean, there's all the different bullet points, just, which is great, about making sure that we covered them all. So I would enlist her for a few hours of this. So we have a sort of consultant from the Franklin Regional Council of Governments who does a lot of planning, supports us. She can put together an estimate of what it would take for her to just review this, make sure we're covering everything.
Sure, sure.
And I'll send that to you in the next, probably a week or two.
Correct, yeah.
And then, and then that would also help if we need a peer review for the stormwater or anything. Again, it's, I think we're starting to feel comfortable that it's pretty.
Minimal, yeah.
Quite simple, yeah.
Yeah, I, it doesn't.
I don't think it's important to move in the current situations.
All right, so I don't have the, maybe I do have the stamped application. You guys stamped it and paid the fee and everything?
Is, is it in the book here? There was a, there was an application.
I have some signed things, but it's not the stamped one.
Oh, okay, all right.
No, we have that one.
Yeah, these are stamped when they come into the town offices. That's what he's looking for, is the original, yeah.
I'm pretty sure Priscilla, I think she, I think she sent it to us.
I thought I saw it in your hand there. I thought I saw it in your hand there when you led the, when you read the.
Oh, good, okay. Alright, we have it somewhere.
When you were reading that stuff, I thought I saw you had, you had all the list, all the uh stamp things in it, John.
Yeah, this is the one that the, you mean their butters and everything?
No, well, no, I thought there was something else you had there. Maybe I misunderstood it.
Yeah, here's. I mean, this is it, but it's not.
Okay, no, I thought I saw something, something that was stamped when you were looking at it earlier, but that's okay. I'm sure they've got it in the town hall.
Um can you? Grab that list. I think on the last, on the back of that, it should be the form that to continue the hearing.
Do we have, do we have to vote to continue it, John?
Yeah, so that's what I'm hoping, there's a form there. Did we use them up the last time? We kept continuing those other hearings. We did get um, all I can find right now is one, um we get requests from, comments from town boards. The police chief at this point said no issues. Regarding this one, that's the only only one we got back, but we'll try to get them back from all the other town offices, including uh DPW because it's a, might be a road issue here too.
There's not one on there.
Alright, so um as long as we agree, we need to pick a date to continue it too. So right now, we're scheduled to have another meeting on September twelfth.
And what day of the week is that again?
It's Wednesday.
So Wednesday.
And the primary public hearing was gonna be about the proposed Dollar General. So the question is, do we wanna do this the same night or? Do you guys wanna wait till after? Till eleven o'clock that night?
Yeah.
Hmm? So you, you think we should do it then?
Or the next week?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if we schedule the amount, a fixed amount of time could be coming at six instead of.
Could we go before the Dollar General and?
Instead of doing seven, you know what I mean?
Oh, if we.
But we'd have to, we'd have to stick to the timeframe we would. I'm saying come in at six on the twelfth instead of seven and do this and then.
Our date was the twelfth, or what'd you say? Yeah.
Yeah, because there's a, there's a holiday and elections or something going on to mess us up. You didn't remember that?
No, I just, I gotta be to other places, so.
Oh, okay.
I do have a split personal.
You do, it's flexible, man, you know what I mean?
Is is that a select board meeting at the same time?
Yeah.
Is it?
So why did we, why did we?
I don't know.
You have the minutes from the last meeting?
I do, I do. Let me see what it said.
Because the tenth, why didn't we do the t- why didn't?
We went through and everybody talked about when they were available.
He left last meeting.
Oh, he wasn't here for that.
September twelfth, yeah, we said motion to continue. Motion to continue them to the twelfth of September, so we had that for the Dollar General.
But we won't have the room because the select board will be here too.
So I'm not sure why we did that, but that's what it is. And just for, just for reference, Rachel, you and I. I don't know why the tenth. What's the tenth?
Rosisha.
Rosisha.
John had a holiday conflict.
That's right.
So I don't know how we can change that twelfth at this point, can we?
Citizens of Deerfield have.
Oh, well, you brought it up. But can we, can we now change that twelfth? Are we, are we locked into it?
I didn't know about it until you brought it up.
Did we post, did you?
Is that changeable?
To the twelfth? Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
She kinda locked there.
So you're kinda locked into that.
So six o'clock on the twelfth?
We can do that. We could also do the nineteenth if that's easier for everybody as well.
That's Yom Kippur, by the way.
Oh.
Just saying. How about the seventeenth?
Can do that.
Well, or or get back to the uh, right, to get back to the Mondays, which is usually the seventeenth.
Well, well, wait a minute, wait a minute. If if I mean, if we're, if we've got a problem with here for for Dollar General.
Well, if you have a public hearing scheduled, the select board, we can change that date.
Yeah, they'll have to.
Okay, well then.
Or there's multiple rooms where you can meet too.
Alright, well, why don't we, why don't we do this on the twelfth? Keep, keep everything together on one day. That's, that's better, I think. If we can do it from six to seven.
I would, well.
What's that?
I hate to add a night, but I just think.
Well, that's what I'm.
To give this more, it's just, just to.
Well, anyways, that's, that's what, that's what's in the minutes, so.
I would go to the seventeenth. You guys could do the seventeenth.
We could do Monday the seventeenth?
We could do Monday the seventeenth.
And you?
That gives.
I, I know, I agree with you, Paul, but I'd rather.
That's okay. It's whatever it is.
Yeah.
Nine seventeen.
More time.
That's about, you know, I mean.
At seven, yeah.
That should be, seventeen? One, two, three, four weeks. We have time to get organized.
Do you think you'd have time to have um?
Notice of it.
Pat, I believe you said, what's her name?
So actually, by by then, we should have, we've had lots of discussions, we've had a lot of your responses.
We can get that going. That would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, sadly, we plan to get you a response package sometime between now and then.
Yeah.
That's what we do, the idea.
Yeah, okay. So I'll uh, I'll do an e- email introduction to to Pat Smith and have her also follow up with some of these things and if you could send it in to Priscilla.
Okay. Yeah, can do. Can do, no problem.
Alright. Alright, everybody, so um we're gonna continue this to September seventeenth, seven o'clock, and we hope at that point, or before that point, we'll have a lot of the information that's been discussed tonight. Um if you have any new things, you can either write a letter or come. So we're gonna continue the public hearing, so it's open to the public. We only close the public hearing when we feel like we have enough information that we don't need more information, then we close the public hearing and then we decide on this site plan and the special permit. Alright? Thank you for everybody's attendance and input and concerns for the town.
Who wants to move that?
So um, okay, sorry.
I'll move that we continue the um discussion of this project.
The public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yep.
To seventeen.
Kim seconded.
I'll second that.
Kim seconded.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed, abstained?
Five zero.
Five zero zero. And the applicant has.
Unminable.
So we'll get you something to sign just to keep it all official, obviously.
It's okay. No, thank you guys for meeting tonight. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next up, any business not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours prior to posting this meeting? Anything?
Nope, nope.
So all I know is that there is another uh solar project that's uh we just got the application today, I believe. So um I think having these two meetings in September might be necessary because maybe that seventeenth is gonna be, maybe we'll end up doing the second one at the same time.
Where's that located?
Where's that? That's one over by Thayer Street.
Do they have that on the CD or did they?
Hundred railroad yard. Alright, thanks, David. This is up at the railroad yard? I think it's in back between the railroad yard and the river, so I don't, I'm not sure this is gonna be. Not sure even any neighbors are gonna come to this one.
Yeah, you can see it. See, this is River Road.
Yeah.
So it'll be right on.
No, oh, it's here in here. Oh, it's two parts.
This is where that salt storage was gonna go.
Yeah.
Oh, so this is a lot quieter than that.
Who, who's doing this one? Who's the?
Yeah, see what it says on there. Have they been to the scoreboard yet?
John, do you know, do they have that on a CD?
Uh, they're supposed to.
If they do, just send it out, like.
You have that box?
There's nothing in, no.
There's no s.
But is it in the?
Folder, I don't know. I get all these. So and then the other thing is um, at some point marijuana is gonna come to us too.
I know, yeah.
So um you know, we're in for some long meetings.
We should put in a range.
We gotta put in for some overtime.
I know.
Double, double our pay.
Yeah, double, triple it, yeah.
So appreciate willingness and. Give you a hundred percent.
You're so generous, you know.
A hundred percent of nothing.
It's a hundred, it's nothing, still nothing.
A hundred nothings.
Yeah.
So there, there's several letters about Dollar General. Should we get them scanned and sent out to us so we can meet them prior to the next meeting? Is that good?
I think that's all we can.
Alright.
The other thing is a little, is it, when the meeting's over, right?
No.
We're still meeting.
I'm just, is there anything else we're gonna talk about in before we adjourn?
Well, I, no.
We can't talk about things after we adjourn.
Well, that, that, that was, that was part of what I was, yeah. There was an article in the paper that I was just concerned. So maybe it's some.
Oh, that, what it said.
What's that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We haven't adjourned yet, actually.
We're still meeting.
I'm just gonna let you know that there's gonna be a new reporter early the next time.
Oh, man, where are you going?
Yeah. What'd you do, get it all wrong or something?
What happened to Andy? I miss Andy.
Uh, he's at the Gazette writing features.
Oh.
Oh, you guys don't move around too much.
Jeez, okay.
So the dream reporter left, so I'm probably.
Oh.
I've been doing Greenfield, Deerfield and.
You have been, um.
I know, I do see your, your byline a lot of places.
Yeah.
You're gonna start calling it the Solomon Reporter.
But yeah, so, you know, I'll probably.
So do we, are we done to move to adjourn now or not? Yeah.
Alright, well, if we, if we have big, if we have big problems, you'll probably come back maybe. Oh, okay, I think I remember.
Orange reporter and editor. And he'll probably be coming if the plans stay as stated.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good luck up there.
Yeah.
Um alright, nothing else? Move to adjourn?
Nine oh five.
Are you moving, Paul? Move, make the move?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Max.
Opposed, abstained?
I'm gonna write down Max is the second.